So this is the July 13th, 2021, Annual Reorganization of the Board of Education. I'm honoring the Ministers of the Northwest, Ed Maron, Patty McLean. So now we will stand for the question.
(inaudible). (inaudible) please.
(inaudible) in the United States of America. (inaudible) for the nation, (inaudible) individual, (inaudible). Justice for all.
(inaudible).
Douglas Beatty?
Here.
Patty McLean?
Here.
Cheryl McKenzie?
Here.
Chris Vermescho? Ed Maron?
Here.
Crystal Palmer?
Present.
Pauline Stone?
Here.
Result of the Superintendent of Schools' recommendation to the Board of Education to approve the agenda, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Pauline Stone? Second?
Second.
Second by Doug Beatty. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Fair enough. Now we'll do nominations for the President and Vice Presidents of the Board of Education. Result, the Board of Education recommends to be elected President of the Board of Education for the District for the 2021-22 Fiscal Year. Are there any nominations for President of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Ed Maron.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Are there any nominations for President of the Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for President of the Board of Education? Roll call, Doug Beatty?
Yes.
Patty McLean?
Yes.
Cheryl McKenzie?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Sure.
Chris Vermescho? Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupore?
Yes.
Pauline Stone?
Yes.
Hey, could you please stand? Raise your hand. I, Ed Maron, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty as the President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I will.
Okay. (inaudible). Now we'll ask for nominations for Vice Presidents of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations for Vice Presidents of the Board of Education?
Cheryl?
To nominate Crystal?
Yeah.
Can I second?
I would second that.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Presidents of the Board of Education?
Chris, are you interested?
Sure.
I nominate Chris Vermescho.
Can I second?
I'll second that one, too.
Are there any other nominations for the Board of Education for Vice President? Are there any other nominations for Vice Presidents of the Board of Education? Doug Beatty?
Crystal Palmer.
Patty McLean?
Crystal Palmer.
Cheryl McKenzie?
Crystal Palmer.
Ed Maron?
I don't know. I'd go with Chris because he doesn't have any votes yet.
Chris Vermescho?
I'll vote for myself.
Crystal Palmer?
I'll vote for Chris.
Vote for?
Crystal.
Pauline Stone?
Crystal Palmer.
So Crystal Palmer is elected Vice President of the Board of Education.
I'm willing to do it. I just, if other people wanted to do it more, that would be okay with me.
That was a tough choice. I can bowl.
I, Crystal Palmer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duty as a Vice President to the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I do. I don't want to say all of that again.
No, then you just sign it there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations both, please.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm true. Congratulations. I'll do what we can, right? We get work.
I will turn the meeting over to you.
All right, so we got that. So, Annual Reorganization Meeting, so I guess we're at D. Performance of the Office, still, we already did that.
E.
Yep. E, Ex officio. So we're, result that the Board of Education appoint Riley O'Leary as Ex officio Student Board Member effective July 1st, 2021, and in June 30th, 2022. And it's Riley Luckin.
Yes.
And I know Riley, and I've always gotten that confused with the way his name is written and the way he pronounces it. So, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Abstain, motion passes. All right. Clerk of the Board. Result of the Board of Education appoint Joanne Menard to serve as a Clerk of the Board for the Education from 7/1/21 through 7/31/21 at an annual salary of $2870, peruated with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Result of the Board of Education appoint Chelsea McDonald to serve as a Clerk of the Board of Education from 8/10/21 through 6/30/22 at an annual salary of $2870, peruated with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Crystal Palmer?
I'll make a motion.
Crystal.
Doug Beatty, second.
Doug Beatty, second. Any questions? Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. Result of the Board of Education appoint Jennifer Stautz to serve as the Treasurer of the District during the 2021-22 Fiscal Year at the annual salary listed $51,146 for an indemnity amount of $1 million. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Cool? Second? Chris? Cheryl? All right. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. Congratulations. All right. Result of the Board of Education appoint Danielle Pelkett to serve as Tax Collector on this District during the 2021-22 Fiscal Year at an annual salary of $5,800 with an indemnity of $1 million. Motion?
I'll motion, Crystal.
Crystal, second?
Call out.
Call out for? All in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. All right. Result of the Board of Education appoint Lee Serrone? Serrone? To serve as the Internal Claims Order of this District during the 2021-22 Fiscal Year at hourly rate of $2250 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion?
Motion, Crystal.
Crystal, second?
Call out.
Call out for? All in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. All right. Result of the Board of Education appoint Lee Serrone? Serrone? To serve as the Internal Claims Order of this District during the 2021-22 Fiscal Year at hourly rate of $2250 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion?
Motion, Crystal.
Crystal, Nicole, second? All, and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. All right. Result of the Board of Education appoint Lee Serrone? Serrone? To serve as the Internal Claims Order of this District during the 2021-22 Fiscal Year at hourly rate of $2250 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion?
Motion, Crystal.
Crystal, Nicole, second? All, and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Knows? Abstains?
I'll join in, I'll second that.
Nicole for?
(inaudible).
All right. You're all welcome to motion. All right. Consent Agenda, Section 6A. Result of the Superintendent of Schools' recommendation to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, other appointments, school attorneys, others, purchasing agents, Clinton, Essex, Warren, Washington Counties, Board of Cooperative Education Services, Non-Stable Physical Insurance Consultant TSA Plan, Committee on Special Education, Subcommittee on Special Education Committee, on Preschool Education, and Partial Hearing Officer, Medicaid Compliance Officer, and Independent Order be and are hereby approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Nicole, okay. Chris, Vermescho? Any discussions? It's a long list here. Any questions?
I just have a question, although I'm pretty sure I remember the answer, but maybe for those who are new to the Board and don't know, the different attorneys all specialize in different areas.
Yep.
Is that correct? So there's not like a general attorney that does everything?
Well, Tony now, Tony and Kevin do the bulk of the work now, but these other attorneys do specialize in, and they're experts, like the deficit and their field throughout the state.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to point out, there was a question earlier for what is a TSA plan?
Okay.
And that is our plan to appoint Pennsir for our 403B, which our 403B is like a 401K. It's for people that could set aside money tax-free for their retirement, which they can access obviously later, later, later in life. So that's what the TSA plan is. Hope it's any help in these appointments that were brought up. I don't think so.
All right. Okay, so that's, let's see here. That's it for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. That's the consent agenda, so we go to Section 7, page 8. Consent Agenda 7A for Designations. Result of the Superintendent of Schools' recommendation to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, designations, official bank depository, all funds, official newspaper, investment of vital funds, Board of Education, meeting dates, established mileage, reimbursement rate, and school meal prices be and hereby approved. Questions? Motion? Motion? Oh, sorry, motion? Yep. Motion?
I'll motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second. Patty?
Patty. All right. No questions? Discussion?
Can I just point out something?
Yeah.
Previously, we had, in other years, we've had the Cross-Republican beer paper for a couple of years, now we've had the Sun beer paper, and meals are going up 10 cents per meal, so kids are still needing for the 41-second meal or adult wants a meal. And then you see the Board of Education meeting, I don't know if you see that, so we've changed it now for August because of all the feedback, which unanimous feedback we've already received. If we want to switch it back to the 10, we can easily do that at discussion, miscellaneous, we just have to make a motion to change that date. Okay?
All right.
So I have a question. So could you say the first rule, it's still free right?
Yes.
Good to have. All right. Any other questions? Motion? I mean, no. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, knows? Abstains? Motion passes. All right. So we're at Section 8, Authorizations, Consent Agenda. Result of the Superintendent of Schools' recommendation to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, authorizations to certify payrolls, conferences, conventions, workshops, attendance, to establish petty cash fund, designation of signatures of checks, superintendent to apply, conventions, workshops, to apply for grants and aid, advances from general fund to other funds, budget transfers on chief school officer's approval, and use of check signing device be and are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Save the discussion?
Yes. We'll motion and second first, and then we'll discuss.
Okay. So, that's motion?
I'll second.
All right. Cheryl, motion?
So, if, just point of clarification, and maybe I can be directed to the right place, but I was just curious about the advances from general fund to other funds, and how does that work? What's, you know, several different funds were identified as where funds would be transferred to?
At that point, it's over to the Queen of Cash.
Yes. Right in front of you.
So what happens is we have several different funds. Special aid funds is our grant fund.
Okay.
Okay, so that fund has a separate bank account. Cafeteria has a separate bank account, capital fund. Those funds oftentimes for payrolls, they have to reimburse the general fund. So there's the transfer of funding from one fund to another.
Okay.
So that happens every two weeks, obviously with the payroll, because the cafeteria pays for their own.
Okay.
So that's the transfer of funds for, the majority of it is that when we pay our debt, it gets paid out of the capital fund, so then it goes from our general fund to the capital fund to be paid in the capital fund, because that has to be tracked separately. So debt service is a fund that we have to use for paying off our debt, and if, so if say we get a bond for a capital project, all of the money sits in the capital fund. Anything we don't use remains in the debt service and can only be used to pay out further debt. That's all it can be used for.
Kind of give you an example, too, is one time we sold a building to West Shaysie, and we received a little bit of money for that, a couple, maybe $100,000 or more, and all that went into debt service, so that goes to pay out the debt here, or actually we sold some debt over there.
Do the funds, if the money is not used up in the year, does it remain, or does it depend on the fund?
Oh, it remains.
It does, it's not like a, I'm used to the government world of the use or lose, so, okay.
No, there are some grants that if you don't use it, you lose it, but there's a few most of them have what we call carryover, and will carryover to the next year. Our general fund has what we call fund balance, and the money remains in the fund balance to be used for whatever things.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. Okay, Section 9, page 12, Other Items. Result of the Superintendent of Schools' recommendation to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, other items, regulated extra classroom activity fund, cooperative purchasing, participation in the following cooperative purchasing alliances, code of ethics, transportation, credit card authorization, association membership, establishment for your on-call rates, substitute, non-contractual stipends for athletic event site coordinator, correction of tax rule and tax bill, cash drawer and policies be and are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion for discussion?
Of course. Are you, are you motioning first?
I'm motioning first.
Okay, hold it.
So I say motion, second, and then discussion?
Well, wait, yeah, we'll wait till you have motion and second. Yes, okay. Cheryl, motion? Who's seconding? Anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, good. All right, discussion. Have fun.
All right, probably a good question to Jennifer again. I was curious about the, the alliances and the purchasing alliances. I don't know if I can get like a 30-second, like what exactly is that, and how are?
It gives us purchasing power.
Okay.
So part of our cooperative bidding process is we go into the courses, or the courses, so all the districts go in and purchase together.
So you get like a reduced rate?
So we go out to bid, and obviously we get a better rate if we're all ordered together versus independently.
Right.
And the rest is all OGS purchasing, so we use state contracted vendors.
Sure.
So that, that's all part of our, those people listed are people that we can buy for.
Sure. Okay, that makes sense.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
I have a question as well, and this is just more testing my memory. Under association memberships, wasn't the school also participating in like a rural school association at one point?
Yes.
Did that, did that group dissolve, or did they lose funding?
No, it's still there. We actually took that out last year when we had budget cuts.
Okay.
It's only like $750. So we do have capacity if that's something that the, that the Board wants to participate in.
Not just if the school felt it was a benefit.
We're a rural school.
Yeah.
We are a rural school. They give out good, they give out good information, they fight for the causes they feel are rights and things that aligns well with us, sometimes it doesn't, but I, I have valued their advocacy throughout the state, so if it's something, like I'm $750, it's not that, it's not that big.
I'm for it.
But why don't we just look at it for, on a future agenda?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? These are good questions, of course, anybody that's listening in public may now know or may not remember. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Knows? Abstains? Motion passes. And now we're at Presentations. Oh, yes. This is a tough one. Joanne?
Wow. For the dedication to the district for 20 years. And more than anything, thank you for helping me, thank you for helping a lot here, to be a better person in general. Okay, everybody, please, recognize your actions. He's gonna stick around, too. Dan, you wanna say anything? I mean, you worked for this a long.
Yeah, 15 years, Joanne. And I was telling the administrative team yesterday that she was clearly the best when I was working with all the school districts, and she's made all of our transitions smooth and enjoyable, and she does a great job on those bumpy days, helping us get through those, so we've had some over the years if I recall correctly. So she's been an amazing steward of the district's information and kept the Board on track, so we'll miss her, but luckily we have enticed her to come back and help us train the new person, and that's gonna be terrific for the district as well, so, Joanne, you've been awesome, and thank you.
Thanks, Jer.
Thank you.
All right. Reports. Audit Committee. Oh, the name is one?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment? Yes. Public comment. Anybody here interested in public comment? No? All right, let's move on. Reports. Mr. Mannix, Superintendent of Schools.
Yeah, okay, so, a couple small reports or pieces of information to discuss. One, I just wanted to reiterate something that has been given to the Board before, and it's been, it's been a desire for some time to provide more students with algebra earlier. And the reason why we want to provide more students with algebra earlier is algebra is historically one of the biggest hurdles for a student to cross in order to graduate, and our feeling is that our eighth graders have done remarkably well in algebra, and some people have felt like that is segregating kids, or favoring kids, or whatever, we don't feel that way, but we do feel that we have outstanding educators, algebra educators in eighth grade, which we've, we have handpicked and placed there with the help of the principals, and we feel that we're ready to provide all kids with algebra. And the benefit to that is many, 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 many of those students are going to pass that algebra region, it's because of the Common Core started, you started seeing kids come home in third grade and fourth grade with algebra questions, solve for x in third or fourth grade. So they've had string, or strands of algebra in their math for their, basically their whole career, and now we feel with the teachers, with their background, that many, many, many of those students are going to pass with flying colors, because we already know that many do pass with flying colors. What may happen is some students won't pass that algebra region's exam in eighth grade. What's the benefit there? We know where they're gonna be deficient. So normally, they start freshman year, we don't know where they're deficient, right? And if they fail, if they're freshman year, they're taking it their sophomore year. So now if they fail their eighth grade year, which we don't think they're going to, but if they do fail their eighth grade year, we can invite them to summer school, they can take the August regions. If they're still struggling, we now know with more detail where they're struggling, they can take algebra again in, through the first semester, and take the January regions, and we can determine, are they struggling again? They wouldn't otherwise be able to take that June regions, August regions, or January regions, so they gain three more bites at the apple to clear a hurdle for kids struggling in math. We have worked with the administrative team to make sure that we know where to place students if they do pass the, say they pass the region's exam in, in January, we could place them, where can we place them at?
We can put a foundations geometry class, a geometry region class, and we can get the square way, so we can definitely get more. The great thing about that, too, is we have a lot of offerings at the higher levels. We have the AP Stats class, we have the AP Calc, AP B, AP C, we have pre-calculus, so it gives us the opportunity for all those kids to take those courses, because they get a higher quicker jump on their, normally, if they go through out number two, they're taken as a junior, they have one year to take, now, you know, pre-calc class, calc, now you're giving them two years. So now they're getting more, more chance at college credits, or a chance at college reading as type courses within that range. So that's a big, that's a big plus for me, is getting more of those kids in those college reading classes.
The other piece, too, is if they're a struggler, if they're a math, if they're not a math, math is if they're strong suit, and we get them over that hurdle, it gives them an earlier chance to maybe sign up for a tech course, or a pathway which they really enjoy. Maybe they want to be in the ag program, maybe they just love science, or, or they want to take an ELA course. So we really feel that it opens up a wide, a much wider variety of coursework for students, and we feel like we're taking, we're giving kids many more chances to cross that most difficult hurdle earlier. So we strategically place excellent teachers there, and we're ready to, we also know that the background that wasn't there before is there for these kids, and we really think it's the best thing to do for our students. Not everybody agrees with us, and we're always willing to be, be in the forefront, be progressive, but we'll hit the brakes if we find out it's not working, right? We can always adjust if, if the theory doesn't meet reality. We've also looked at other school districts that have done this, and for years, and they've had very, very, the success that we're saying that we're gonna have, it's a success that they've enjoyed. So I believe in it, I think it's gonna help all of our kids, I think it's gonna help across the board. I think we're gonna, we're gonna continue to flourish. That's why we're gonna have algebra for all, and sign algebra for all, more algebra offerings in the eighth grade.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, just one question. And so that will be for this upcoming school year, 21-22, all eighth grade students will be offered to take algebra?
Just about all eighth grade students.
Sure.
I would tell you that also previously, for the longest time I was here, it was like 28 kids, that's it, that could take algebra. Hard, like, that's it, you know, 28 or less kids could take algebra. And then over the last few years, Crystal Nelson, you've had about 50 students taking algebra, and their scores have been outstanding, right?
Yes.
And our district scores have been outstanding for algebra. Okay? So we're like, we're the lock, for the big schools, we have the best algebra results, okay? So we're ready to put that expertise down at the lower level and see if we can give those kids a jumpstart on their educational path. Okay?
Dan, I would like to say that, at least it's my understanding and research that I've read, that algebra is an indicator of better success in high school and going forward, all the way around, and some people, they might be opposed to it, so there are some people that might say, well, I don't need that, I'll never use that, but it's a, from what I've read, it's a mechanism of, a method of logic and a method of think.
Thank you for helping me. Thank you for helping me a lot here to be better person in general. Okay, everybody please recognize your actions. He's gonna stick around too. Dan, you wanna say anything? I mean, you worked with this along.
Yeah, fifteen years, Joanne. And I was telling the administrative team yesterday that she was clearly the best when I was working with all the school districts. And she's made all of our transitions smooth and enjoyable. And she does a great job on those bumpy days, helping us get through those. So we've had some over the years if I recall correctly. So she's been an amazing steward of the district's information and kept the board on track. So we'll miss her, but luckily we have enticed her to come back and help us train the new person. And that's gonna be terrific for the district as well. So, Joanne, you've been awesome, and thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, reports. Audit Committee. Oh, the name is one?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, yes. Public comment. Anybody here interested in public comment? No? All right, let's move on. Reports. Mr. Maddox, Superintendent of Schools.
Yeah, okay, so a couple small reports or pieces of information to discuss. One, I just wanted to reiterate something that has been given to the board before. And it's been, it's been a desire for some time to provide more students with algebra earlier. And the reason why we want to provide more students with algebra earlier is algebra is historically one of the biggest hurdles for a student to cross in order to graduate. And our feeling is that our eighth graders have done remarkably well in algebra. And some people have felt like that is segregating kids or favoring kids or whatever. We don't feel that way, but we do feel that we have outstanding educators, algebra educators in eighth grade, which we've, we have handpicked and placed there with the help of the principals. And we feel that we're ready to provide all kids with algebra. And the benefit to that is many, 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 many of those students are going to pass that algebra region. It's because of the Common Core started, you started seeing kids come home in third grade and fourth grade with algebra questions. Solve for x in third or fourth grade. So they've had string, or strands of algebra in their math for their, basically their whole career. And now we feel with the teachers, with their background, that many, many, many of those students are going to pass with flying colors because we already know that many do pass with flying colors. What may happen is some students won't pass that algebra region's exam in eighth grade. What's the benefit there? We know where they're gonna be deficient. So normally, they start freshman year, we don't know where they're deficient, right? And if they fail, if they're freshman year, they're taking it their sophomore year. So now if they fail their eighth grade year, which we don't think they're going to, but if they do fail their eighth grade year, we can invite them to summer school. They could take the August regions. If they're still struggling, we now know with more detail where they're struggling. They could take algebra again in, through the first semester and take the January regions. And we can determine, are they struggling again? They wouldn't otherwise be able to take that June regions, August regions, or January regions. So they gain three more bites at the apple to clear hurdle for kids struggling in math. We have worked with the administrative team to make sure that we know where to place students if they do pass the, say they pass the regions exam in, in January, we could place them, where can we place them at?
We could put a foundations geometry class, geometry regions class, and we can get a square way. So we could definitely get more. The great thing about that too is we have a lot of offerings at the higher levels. We have the AP Stats class, we have the AP Calc, AP B, EC, we have pre-calculus. So it gives us the opportunity for all those kids to take those courses because they get a higher pressure jump on them. Normally, if they go throughout the two, they're taking that as a junior, they have one year to take, now you know, pre-calc class, calc. Now you're giving two years. So now they're getting more, more chance at college credits or a chance at college reading as type courses within that grade. So that's a big, that's a big plus for me, is getting more of those kids in those college reading classes.
The other piece too is if they're a struggler, if they're a math, if they're not a math, math is if they're strong suit and we get them over that hurdle, it gives them an earlier chance to maybe sign up for a tech course or a pathway which they really enjoy. Maybe they wanna be in the ag program, maybe they just love science or, or they wanna take an ELA course. So we really feel that it opens up a wide, a much wider variety of coursework for students. And we feel like we're taking, we're giving kids many more chances to cross that most difficult hurdle earlier. So we strategically place excellent teachers there and we're ready to. We also know that the background that wasn't there before is there for these kids. And we really think it's the best thing to do for our students. Not everybody agrees with us, and we're always willing to be, be in the forefront, be progressive, but we'll hit the brakes if we find out it's not working, right? We can always adjust if, if the theory doesn't meet reality. We've also looked at other school districts that have done this and for years. And they've had very, very, the success that we're saying that we're gonna have, it's a success that they enjoyed. So I believe in it, I think it's gonna help all of our kids, I think it's gonna help across the board. I think we're gonna, we're gonna continue to flourish. That's why we're gonna have algebra, algebra for all and sign algebra problem, more algebra offerings in the eighth grade.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, just one question. And so that will be for this upcoming school year, twenty-one, twenty-two, all eighth grade students will be offered to take algebra?
Just about all eighth grade students.
Sure.
I would tell you that also previously, for the longest time I was here, it was like twenty-eight kids, that's it, that could take algebra. Hard enough, like that's it, you know, twenty-eight or less kids could take algebra. And then over the last few years, Principal Nelson, you've had about fifty students taking algebra. And their scores have been outstanding, right?
Yes.
And our district scores have been outstanding for algebra. Okay, so we're like, we're the law, for the big schools, we have the best algebra results, okay? So we're ready to put that expertise down at the lower level and see if we can give those kids a jumpstart on their educational path, okay?
Dan, I would like to say that, at least it's my understanding and research that I've read, that algebra is an indicator of better success in high school and going forward all the way around. And some people, they might be opposed to it. So there are some people that might say, well, I don't need that, I'll never use that. But it's a, from what I've read, it's a mechanism of, a method of logic and a method to think. I don't know if you or your administrators wanna elaborate on that perspective?
The only thing is, they may not want it, but they have to pass it. It's a hurdle that you can't decide not to pass. There's a plenty of other regions courses that you don't need to take, algebra is one you have to take. So whether you want it or not, you got, you're gonna have to take it. And it is, I do agree with you, it's, it is that logical thinking. And that's been the cool thing about the Common Core, and I'm not gonna say I'm a big Common Core proponent, but it's been cool to watch kids, little kids do algebra equations, solve for x. Would you help, would you, anything I said?
It is a graduation requirement for all of our kids. The other piece too is to look at like Clint Community College, they have placement tests for some of our, our cap courses. And that, most of that placement test for math is a lot of algebra. So we find a lot of times if we try to get like a tech course or things like that, get college credit for tech course, this kid struggled a little bit with taking the math exam to get in that course for college credit. So taken earlier, these kids have some of those skills that they, they can build upon, do well in that placement exam, and now they can get that course credit. So I think that's another plus that we can work at, having our kids earlier on take some of those college courses because they can get to placement tests. So years later, they're till junior before they're ready to take that placement test. And now we're waiting, we have two years to get, if you get it earlier on, that means three, four years we can push those kids into those college reading classes. And that's, that's another, another plus.
Principal Nelson?
I think one of the things you were alluding to, Mr. Merritt, was the fact that perhaps our students aren't prepared or ready for algebra and struggle with math traditionally. I've put in place some supports for students who might struggle taking algebra that first year as an integrator. For instance, I have created an algebra lab where students can go and get extra help from their actual algebra teacher. I've spoken and worked with Assistant Superintendent Paulie Tery on how to help our students with IBS. And we have a plan to work with that. So we have tried to look at all our students and try to find those supports that they need to be successful so they will earn that credit and be able to have that extra year in high school to explore college pathways or make a career. So that's what we're all looking at.
Thank you. It's great to see, it's great to see anticipating potential struggles and addressing them early. Thank you.
Just another question then, like, it's a very persuasive argument. I, I think it sounds awesome, but what, what is the major argument against it? Is it just people who don't like math and don't wanna do it, or is there an actual, like, whatever?
I think, I think some people are fearful around here that we're always doing things to save money. Like, we're not doing things to have more college offerings, we're doing things so that we can reduce the teacher later on. Nothing's further from the truth. The other piece which is a good argument is some kids might mathematically not be ready for algebra. And that, I would say, in years past, when you didn't have the algebra strand embedded throughout much, a lot of times in the Common Core, kids hadn't been exposed to that, and maybe the right time was when they're a freshman. But I remember I, you know, we used to teach reading in first and second grade. I'm looking at Principal Stoudamire right now, and what are we doing in kindergarten now, right? Because kids are, are reading much sooner now because things change over time. So I think that's one of the things that people would say is that they're, they're just not gonna be ready. And, you know, we have a theory and we've seen other schools see this success. We've doubled our option already and we've actually improved our results. But again, if this doesn't work out, we're gonna pump the brakes, add resources, and we're still gonna get people across the finish line. We're not gonna be like, oh, we failed, everybody's gonna fail now, well, gotta go tell the board we're not gonna, you know, not gonna be successful. So, I think those are the two big ones I think.
Do you have a question?
Okay. So, yeah, I'm excited about it, I'm excited. And, you know, let's, I think the teachers we have, all of our teachers have been doing a great job. I think we're ready to get them across, or, and we'll keep an eye on it. A couple of other items, grant procurement, which is something we've been purchasing, we've been purchasing through BOCs for a number of years, I'd say three years, maybe two, two or three years. A portion of a person to help us with grants, I'm gonna say roughly two days a week. Theoretically, that person works with us two days a week, they're not necessarily here, but that's how much time they put in. We have secured more and more and more grants, and I put something else in the Board of Education. And next, over the next couple of years, we're looking at, you know, well, way more than ten million dollars in grants. And as I've said to Kathy and Ed for a couple of weeks, I don't know if I mentioned the grant procurement person at the board level. I really want to make sure that this federal money is spent right. Somebody asked a question about giving money, does this, I think with Cheryl, do any of this, is any of this money, is it used or lose it? This, some, most of this money, yeah, most of the money will be used or lose it, most of it. Because some of the local, some of the grants, those are the smaller grants, they'll have carryover. But this other money will be used or lose it. It's a ton of money, I wanna maximize it, I wanna spend every dime. And the only way we're gonna do that is to put somebody in charge every single day of figuring out how to spend it. Because I'm gonna tell you what, we've had a ton of grants over the years, and it's hard to spend money when you're outfitted as well as we are. So how do you strategically spend money to help our students, help our taxpayers, offset other costs, right? So that it doesn't have to come out of the bulk of the fund, all these, all these great things you can do with the money. So I really want to move forward with the grant procurement person paid for out of the grants, so it's not a local expense. It's money that's coming out of the, you know, a little bit of this grant, a little bit of that grant, a little bit of this grant. And we would no longer pay BOCs. Their, the money for the, for the, has nothing to do with BOCs, has everything to do with, we love that service, we want it all.
Right.
And again, we will, I think we will be able to maximize money in, in amazing ways.
Dan, could you, could you talk about how, does this person will not be someone that's just a county type person? This is someone who's gonna integrate, integrate pedagogy with administrators, personnel, staff, you?
Yeah, yeah, the person, the person we have in mind, this person we've been working with, and they do, they're not just an accountant saying, we have, you know, it's just an account, an account's a wonderful profession. But an accountant's gonna tell you how much money we have left, who can spend it, that kind of thing, right? And our business office does a great job working, and they go to our admin meetings, that didn't always happen. They go to our admin meetings and they know what we're trying to do. This person actually I see day to day, sitting down with our principals, sitting down with our assistant superintendent, sitting down with me, walking the halls, going into our libraries, and this is somebody who's been there, done that for, actually I think she was stationed in the Ithaca School District. I think that was her sole, might have been her sole responsibility, not, it was just about her sole responsibility. And Ithaca, an inner-city school district, and she, she made a tick for that. And we have, like I said, we have a ton of money. And Joanne, why don't you just talk a little bit about the new money coming in and, and how you have, how it's broken up? And it's not like, hey, here's ten million dollars, go, go better your school.
Yeah, it is extremely complex. So the, I listed the two grants, I think, that you can see. So one is called the CRSA, which is the Corona response, coronavirus response and really supplemental appropriation. So that's one. And in that money, there's four different allocations we have to have. So within that one point eight million, ninety percent has to go to the LEA allocation. Then you have a discretionary allocation, then you have a year two allocation, and then you have a total allocation with state concern. So every, so this is why we need some assistance, because, and that's just the one. The next one is even more complex, where the ARP, which is the American Rescue Plan, which is the larger of the two, which is almost four million dollars, that would have ninety percent of the S R allocation, and of that ninety percent, twenty percent has to go to learning loss. So someone has to implement the twenty percent of the learning loss. And then you have one percent has to go to summer enrichment, one percent has to go to comprehensive after school, and then five percent has to go, another five percent is a reserve for learning loss. So within each allotment are a lot of rules and tracking and implementation. So as far as tracking the money, the business office has always done that. But implementing all of these plans is the beast in and of itself that we just don't have enough bodies for.
So am I interpreting that the learning loss is, it's right away to catch on, on the issue of COVID impact and learning loss, et cetera?
Which is really what we're doing with part of our summer bridge program, which is addressing some of that. And some of that has to be directly for summer enrichment, but so you can use it for summer enrichment, but then you have to get to the learning loss as well. So through, and then there's the after-school program. It's, it's a lot of money, and this all has to be spent within three or four years. It's depending on what the state does with it, at minimum three years.
Sure.
So it's a lot, it's a lot to think about.
We also know there's other grants coming out, and as I mentioned during negotiations over here, we're not gonna apologize for asking for money and securing money to help improve our environment and bring money into our, into the pockets of the people that work here and into our local economy. So there are other grants that we will be running as well.
So just to clarify then, this position that you're looking to create and, and fund would be a three to four-year position?
Well, I think you wanna reevaluate it three or four years and see if the theory worked out. And then you say, well, what else do we have, you know, did we secure more grants, where are we?
Okay.
And I'll give you an example, just, just one of the smaller grants is, it's completely, I'm saying it's a smaller grant because it wasn't a big grant, right? Was our Title I, our Title, most of our Title grants are federal grants, as is the COVID money. So now our IDA grant, our Title I grant, combined they, they equal a million dollars. I would say every year, we have a hard time at the end of the year allocating all of that money just in and of itself. I think we can get carryover, and that's nice thing is that money does carryover. But I'd rather be, the, the problem is when you have carryover, that's a red flag to the Fed saying, maybe they don't need it, right? And I'd rather be maximizing all the money. But in three or four years, I would think we take a look and say, and see what the value is. Oh, one other piece to this is, the person is retiring, truly retiring within a year, and they wanna train somebody else, so we would benefit, this district, Beaverton would benefit from that. But like, Joanne's gonna help us train her successor, we could have that. We have truly an expert in the state training somebody else to do that, and she'll be here, locked up with us. She loves working with us because we're, these, these guys are super responsive. And when we wanna do something, we do it, we don't sit around and talk about it, we get it done. So I'm excited that she wants to be with us, and I think she will help move the needle for Beaverton.
Great.
So does this position fall under the business district?
It, it really falls on, on an org chart, I'm gonna hand out an org chart in just a second to everybody. It would really fall underneath me. So it would, she's gonna work with you close, she already does work with you closely, but she's gonna work with them just as much. So she would answer, she essentially answer to me. The other positions which are new, and it, and this kind of falls under some of our goals and, and some of this, some of this COVID money is, we know that what we'd like to have next year be a seamless year, everybody just walks back in and there's no issues, and the state doesn't say you have any more tasks to do, or there's no requirements related to COVID. We know that that's not gonna happen. We know that kids are, kids are gonna struggle. We know that, and maybe not just the kids are gonna struggle, but we also anticipating more behavior issues. I think there's been a lot of talk about mental health issues. I think currently, we have two administrators at the elementary level that, that handle a thousand kids. And if you look at all the other schools, for instance, Sabal Valley has three small elementary schools, each with a principal. Combined, they have less than five hundred, I think less than six hundred kids, and they have three administrators. I would propose that we would be utilizing some of our monies to bring in a, an associate principal into, a, a shared associate principal into the elementary schools to help with oversight. That's gonna be directed our way, we don't know what next year we'll bring, we just know there will be some. And with the discipline issues surrounding a thousand kids. Now, on top of that, they would do other things like evaluations and help schedule and many, many other things that an associate principal would do. So open for discussion on an associate principal, shared associate principal at the elementary school. And we have, maybe we need to go into executive session if we're gonna talk specifically about, about people. But I also have brought up a couple of times here now, and certainly Kathy and Ed in the reorganization meeting, or sorry, in the agenda setting meetings, the idea of accelerating our, our plan, our contingency plan for athletics, extracurriculars, oversight of athletics and extracurriculars, single-person oversight of that, along with the need for administrative oversight at both the high school and the middle school. So to try to add clarity to that, the, prior to, prior to this plan, there were, or in prior COVID, there were three administrators at, or three people handling discipline and the coordination of athletics. Those people were the head teacher, the dean of students, and an assistant principal. And I would like to continue with three people overseeing the discipline. And I'd like to have one person oversee, not be the coordinator of athletics. What, sooner rather than later, be the administr, whatever the title might be, there's, there's a number of titles. The director of athletics is an administrative title, not, not a teacher on assignment, where there's just administrative oversight for athletics and our extracurriculars, which dovetails with our goals. And it's also, I'm, I'm gonna sit here and tell you that as good as we've been, it could be better. And we can be better, I think the biggest piece we're missing isn't the coordination. I think it's the administrative oversight. And I think adding that person into the mix would actually bring us closer to maybe where we were at one point when, I know there was Don Bainbridge was the director of physical education here. He retired, Steve Broadwell did a great job here for years. I know that, that we lost that position a few years back when an individual wasn't doing the administrative job. Okay, Ed, you were here, Pauline, you were here. That person wasn't doing the administrative job in athletics. We had to let that person go before I got here, and then Greg stepped in to fill the coordinator of athletics again. I think we've done a really good job coordinating athletics. Our kids are outfitted, the schedules are on, the buses show up, we coordinate the heck out of athletics. But there's, there are pieces that an administrator might bring, will, that might, will bring that they are, are needed for us to go, I think, to the next level. So my proposal is, and I know it's sustainable, and we can talk about use of grant monies and other things. Is to bring two associate principals into the fold and, and eventually one person to the direct, let's just call it the director of athletics. Open that up for questions, thoughts?
Maybe his thoughts, good, bad, great, not so good. Anyway?
So again, is this in hopes to start for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be paramount, that's why I'm bringing it up today. I think because we'd like to post it as soon as possible. We did have a couple of candidates for associate principal. We just had a better one right, sitting right there. Yeah, yeah, and I think it's gonna be important walking in the door to have everybody know this is, these are the rules and regulations that we're, we're working with this year, and welcome back, and support the kids and the teachers. But we definitely, so not only do we definitely feel like we're gonna have some issues with the transition back for everybody here, but what we're also not talking about is, what were the issues we've had before? We've heard from the teachers many times in the committee of nine meetings, say, that we, we, we have discipline issues. And we also have other remarkable, other issues that have been brought on to the principals or, or administration that are overwhelming, I'd say, to, to some of them, but to, to me at least, if I was sitting in their shoes. Like suicide prevention training, SE mandated mental health education, which we're being audited by the comptroller's office right now. Of, the grants don't make things any, they don't make things easier. When you're trying to track where are the kids gonna be, who's doing after-school? You can talk to the team right here, how difficult the, the grants were. Sexual harassment training, civil rights recording, the, the evaluation of staff has always been difficult with a smaller admin team. And it goes at nine hundred and nine hundred and ninety hours reporting, that's a new report that we track very carefully, each, and each building. Teacher course mapping has been a challenge, I'd say, to, for, for others. I think the list can go on and on. My point is, there's no end to the tasks being assigned to school districts and people in administration. And I think we need support besides just working with the kids every, every day. I think, I think it will help the great principals that you have sitting right in front of us.
And this org chart, the, the shared associate principal is listed in the draft, is for the elementaries, but that's not a position that's still yet.
Currently, that's not a, you're right. And the other issue that, can I just add to that? The other issue that we do hear is that, for instance, yesterday we had an administrative team meeting, and it was wonderful to have everybody there. But when the principals come and meet with me, we hear, my old temple, there's nobody, there's not an administrator watching my building, right? I contacted out, and then we've had, actually you got called out yesterday, right? We've had people, you know, regularly get called out, and then they miss, it's an important meeting. I told them all, Mark, I'm your calendar, you're not supposed to miss that meeting. But you, you know, sometimes you miss it because there's not a set of hands.
Is, is that the only dual position on, on this chart that doesn't exist right now?
Correct. Well, no, sorry. Correct. Well, no, sorry. That's a dual position. And then the coordinator of athletics and the head teacher of the dual position, you see that over in the high school?
Yeah.
Actually, that coordinator of athletics does, does middle school work and high school work. The head teacher does just high school work. It's not a point five, I just put point five there.
Right. That's the, yeah, position then.
Yep.
Anyway, that's the one that we already have.
Yeah, she just asked if it's the only dual position.
But it's, um, there's a, um, vote for appointing it again.
Yes.
So it's, yeah, so it does exist, but it's, yeah, okay.
Oh, the other piece too is, and I don't move across that bridge we get there. I would say that, um, um, that, that particular person has thirty-three years of experience with us.
So, and the, the, okay, and the, and the director of athletics, if that becomes a future one, that would also be added to the chart?
Well, eventually you would, um, not have the coordinator of athletics, I don't think, and you'd have the director.
Oh, it wouldn't be both?
That would, I, I see maybe the director of athletics needs a small piece for some, maybe coordination. Maybe, we'll see how it goes, maybe coordination help. But I do believe that it's a full-time job to be the Beadman Town director of athletics and extracurriculars. And the extracurriculars haven't had great oversight over the year.
Yeah, I was just gonna, for Cheryl, one of the things that we did originally, we started talking about this director. Is, you know, there's, there's always, uh, many schools, there's a lot of focus on the athletic component, right? And sometimes the extracurricular gets, well, when we focus on the development of kids all around, athletics is great and so is extracurricular. So let's make sure that they're all looked at together in one capacity.
Sure. No, I appreciate that clarity. I didn't know you had that position of moving more together. Okay.
So if you're asking our opinion, I'm, I'm in favor of going to hire two more associate principals.
Thank you. I am asking your opinion. It's, I don't need a resolution because we have the position created already. It's just where does, uh, I don't wanna get out in front and do something that people don't understand or don't wanna do. Um, but I do think that helps us transition to a new place. Helps us contingency train, um, somebody certainly this year. And then I certainly think that, uh, the, the person can really help at the element, at the other person can really help at the elementary levels, around the elementary buildings.
I'm in favor of, I think that, you know, if you gather, you don't believe at all. If there is such thing, or it being stretched so thin, and if you have students coming into the district and you have grants, you can grant, sometimes grants, it would obviously be helpful.
Yeah, that's, I thank you for that. I forgot to mention that, uh, we're the only district that's growing in over the last, I don't know how many years, we've added hundreds of kids to the district. So more than two hundred kids to the district. Their schools, I mean, Chase East, what do you, four hundred kids? Where do you have Chase East?
Yeah, we lose enrollment every year. We're a high performing school, but we are letting kids, uh, some kids to this district, which is what we're offering, before thinking about two minutes before the chair is carried off.
Anybody? Yeah? Anyone else?
Those are the big, those are our options, the big ticket items that want to be on the board anywhere. These are, we can add with other discussions later, but, um, is there any other feedback for me?
Business manager.
What's that?
She's on the day.
Oh, sorry.
I don't have much tonight. I'm just letting everybody know our external audit will start at the end of the month. All that week. They probably won't be here the entire week, but it could be. Um, so we're working diligently. That's what the business office is doing. Full steam ahead right now. It's all, our concentration is the, um, audit. Um, and then Carol is busy along with us with the audit and very busy with finishing up ELO and summer, summer school. Um, so we're exceptionally busy in the business office at the moment. Everyone thinks summer's quiet, but it's really, really not. So, yeah, that's what, that's what we're up to right now.
Would you mind transitioning straight into the audit committees since Kathy's not here?
I couldn't even know what's wrong with that.
Eh, just, you know.
On top of my head, what did we go over? It was making vehicles?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, there was nothing real exciting going on. We did a lot of payments. Um, we've been very busy with the ELO. Uh, so a lot of cashless persons going out. Um, and all very clean, had very little, Lisa Robins is our interim kinds auditor. There was very little to, uh, report on there. Um, cafeteria, I don't think we did. It was a quick meeting.
One thing I would say, Jen, this was remarkable is the amount of purchasing we did with the extended learning time opportunities. And to have no errors in the whole process, right? Let me think about that. That was kind of remarkable.
Yeah. It was a, a huge undertaking. The kids benefited greatly from it, which I think kept everybody going, to be honest with you. That was the coolest part was seeing all the kids benefit from all of this hard work. So that was really good. Um, but yeah, it was, it was a really, it's been a really clean process, believe it or not. Like that was happening, happening so, cleaning so fast, but the whole standard did it. Yeah.
I know, I appreciate it. My family alone, my son got a job and he's gonna be able to drive. Thank you, Mr. Buzan.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Four months, he'll be able to drive himself through the jail. The sheriff's break too, right? I was gonna mention, our, our partnerships with the Y have strengthened and, and I know Dylan was talking about the, um, taking the lifeguard course, maybe a water safety course in the future. And then the, I love what we did with Bear Town. I think that's gonna be a, a place for us to, for our kids to enjoy, um, go on field trips and nature walks and stuff into the years to come. So that's really cool.
Um, I went as a, as a parent volunteer and I think I probably had more fun than the kids looking at the bugs in the streams. And it was great.
It's glad we have this opportunity. Great. All right, Hall of Fame.
I can do it briefly. So our last meeting was, um, July seventh. I had some audio issues, so I, I couldn't hear at all. But, um, working to breaking into some more subcommittees, um, planning the weekend of alumni weekend, um, homecoming weekend. It'll be Friday, October first. We have the handout available to us. And, um, so it was alumni, the event, and there was two other committees, fundraising and communications. Um, and that's all I heard until.
Yeah, it was, that was it. And I know we talked longer, but, um, we were just kinda narrowing down some items. Uh, just, you see, this is the alumni weekend, this is the homecoming weekend, alumni weekend. It will be a great, it'll be a great, um, great weekend. So there'll be more to come, but that's a lot of work. We're gonna see a request for more, um, more members on that committee because it's a ton of work. We need, we need like somebody, a couple of people handle the golf tournament, a couple of people handle the maybe a fun run. And there's, you know, the communications, it's a lot of work and we gotta get it right. It's gonna be, should be glorious. And also Gary Laber's been doing a really good job helping me and outfit the whole Hall of Fame. Where that's gonna, that's gonna be in the high school entrance. That will look totally different next time you walk in there. You really should.
Great. All right, minutes as presented, section thirteen. Resolved superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education to approve the following minutes. The P O E minutes, six twenty-two, the audit committee minutes, six twenty-two. Motion?
Motion.
Call, second?
Second.
All right, Cheryl, questions?
Question, just a minor one. I found a typo today and it, it may or may not be important. Do I read it?
Yeah.
Just email.
Just email. Yeah, somebody's gonna get paid eighteen thousand dollars an hour.
Where is that?
Um, page three, fifth to first. Did you fix it? Oh, I caught it already. I was like, whoa.
Some, some other anal person was reviewing the notes before and emailed Joanne.
Okay, we share mine. Yes, I appreciate it, man.
You're welcome.
Detail, right.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, motion passes. All right, section fourteen, CSC CPSC. Resolved superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education to approve the CSC CPSC and five oh four recommendations dated seven thirteen twenty-one. Motion?
A motion, Crystal.
Crystal, second?
I'll second, if you'll.
Recall? Questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes, abstains, motion passes. Next one is section fifteen, it's consent agenda for personnel approvals. Resolved superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education that the following resolutions on the consent agenda, resignations, appointments, stipends, CSC CPSC, retirement and tenure be and hereby approved. Motion? Cheryl, second?
I'll second, Patty.
All right, Patty.
Question.
Questions? Fire.
Again, very minor point, um, uh, for appointment, I guess it's, uh, section D, uh, just noting that, um, maybe to, um, eldenize, um, the position appropriate to the period, approbationary period. Has a, it looks like it's like a one day turnaround, the year is, I think, inactive.
Should be twenty twenty-two.
Yep, that's up.
Modify that.
Um, and I do have, yeah, a problem. Um, should we talk about that one? Good, thank you.
And I have a comment actually on the subject you, uh, coaches and plans. Uh, Beadman Athletics had an opportunity to hire a coach with unsurpassed qualifications who would have been an unbelievable resource for the entire girls and boys program. Unfortunately, that did not happen. This is a huge loss for the Beadman Town student athletics. Mine, along with many Beadman Town families, are very disappointed in this missed opportunity for our student athletes. Thank you.
Hope that clarity to that. We had an application, somebody who I had recruited for a number of years. And this person did put in their name to coach one of the sports and then they withdrew their name. Still very disappointed.
All right. Well, thank, thanks for the, your thoughts.
Um, you know, really positive note here, um, it's listed out in the chart is, oh, ladies have passed the resolution.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but any other discussions or questions? Motion? Oh, you already did, I'm sorry.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, noes, abstains, resolution passes. Go ahead, Ben.
Thanks, Ms. Char, congratulations on your amendment.
Thank you for staying. All right, um, all the way to miscellaneous sixteen, consent agenda. Resolved superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda. Initial evaluations during summer twenty twenty-one, payment to attend CSC CPSC meetings, use of district facilities, letter of agreement, Dale Tompkins, fingerprinting, organizational chart, creation of grants, procurement supervisor, be and hereby approved. Motion?
I'll motion, Crystal.
Crystal? Second?
Second, Cheryl.
Any, any questions, discussion?
And I would, I would make, um, an adjustment to org chart G based on our discussion and move the draft, and we would take the draft off this and, and move R seven thirteen twenty-one in place of R five seven twenty-one. And that would be, then we have the org chart in place for the year.
Okay. Any, any thoughts on that? All right, all in favor of amended for the draft, for the, um, transition, the org chart from draft. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes, abstains, motion passes. Financial. Resolved superintendent of schools recommends to the board of education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports and transfers be and are hereby approved. Motion?
Motion, Cheryl.
Second?
I'll second, Crystal.
Questions?
Questions?
It's gonna be my new headline. Um, I have to be schooled again, probably through a situation to you. Um, a question about the section C transfers. Um, I just need to be educated. When I, when I read it, it, it says that, um, a reallocation of funds from employee benefits, medical, dental, and, and other employee benefits, medical, dental, whatever, to, um, to different, um, uh, other budgetary items. And I was just curious, um, you know, is that, is that typical? Is that just the benefits that are not used for the year and they have to be used up some other way?
Um, it's not benefits that, that are being used up. It's just that there was money there, extra money. So we always, um, budget for people coming into our plan because there's several ways that don't happen. Um, so we never know who's coming in or going out, of course.
Sure.
Um, so at the end of the year, we look to see if there's any purchases that we would like to make and if there is money available. Um, and then we look to see where the money is and move it to the appropriate account codes. So where we would pay it from.
So the, the, um, uh, medical, dental, uh, yeah, it's like this one says employee benefits, medical, dental. That it's not like a pot of, of funds that would be allocated to them at some point later in time? It's like, you wanna use it?
Our insurance bill. We pay our insurance to posies.
Okay.
Um, so we pay our insurance bill out of there and it's all, we pay it monthly. And we go through our, the monthly bill every, every month to see who was added, deleted, who's passed away, so on and so forth. Um, so there was money left there and we decided to make a few purchases at the end of the year, which is typical.
Yeah.
If there is money there and we know there's a need.
Right.
Then we move it to the correct account code. So therefore it's tracked correctly for our ST three. When we submit to the state, it's actually in the right spot. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And if it, if it, if there, there wasn't, if we didn't do that with the money, the money would go into that fund balance that I talked about. So is it, would, that's gone.
Right.
It just rolled over into fund balance.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Douglas B?
Yes.
How you looking, Pam?
Yes.
Cheryl McKenzie?
Yes.
Anne Mearon?
Yes.
Christopher Micho?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Bumford?
Yes.
Tommy Shaw?
Yes.
Financial reports, full-time transfers. Additional items. All right, board vacancy. All right, so we have an opening seat for the board. And, um, I know that we have had some past board members showing interest to be on the board. I guess the question is up to the board as to how we want to address the board vacant. And we, we have had counsel on this. Um, so we have the opportunity to appoint someone like we've done in the past. So I guess it's, the question is to the board, how, how do you wanna do this? We can, um, ask for letters of interest. Uh, we have people that are interested. We interview them. Anybody have any thoughts on this?
We could also have an election.
We could also have an election. That's absolutely true.
I don't, I don't support that, but just for clarity, we could.
No, that's, you know, for transparency, we could do whatever the board wants to do, however you wanna do it. You know, that does cost money and, and time and all that. But if that's what the board wants to do, that is, that is an option.
Is anybody interested now?
Yes.
Yes. I think there are a few people interested. Um, so the question is of time. Um, sooner the better. And suppose we could have someone come and send us letters of interest that we can all look at and, and then make a decision by the next board meeting and have a vote on it? We could have an emergency board meeting and just vote on it, get somebody appointed sooner than that. It's up to us.
If you're still listening, the letters of interest is a good idea.
Okay.
I, I support that as well, Chris. I like that approach.
The position is only until the, um...
The election may.
Correct.
So, May seventeen twenty twenty-two, just till then. And so I want, right, one position?
Yes.
Three names.
Correct.
Are there any prior members who have expressed interest?
Yes.
That, so they have prior series, they on the board?
Yep, yep. There, there's, there's a couple of them, actually, potentially. So that's open. All right, so, um...
Want to do standard operating? We've done this maybe twice previously. We put out something on Facebook, we advertise in paper of interest. And we asked for people to send a, a, a letter to the board. You guys get all the letters. Right? And then we, you actually brought, I don't know, did they bring in everybody, did they say everybody, or did they pick like the top, you? I recall.
Uh, so I served on one com, board committee, um, I forget which seat it was that got appointed, but, um, we, we chose, I think, three or four or five people from the applicants.
Okay.
Not the entire pool.
Okay.
And then we interviewed.
Right.
And it wasn't the whole board, I think, you know, three or four people volunteered. We interviewed and then reported back to the whole board.
So one time it was that way, one time the whole board?
Yeah.
Was here, like, we came in during a board meeting?
So why don't we just, we'll just see how many letters we get and if we only get
a few, yes, yeah.
One or two letters anyway, then it doesn't matter.
Right.
And we'll, we'll discuss the fact.
Yep.
All right.
So, what I do is, um, we'll push out, we'll only ask for one question. Why are you interested in serving in the board of education? That's the question that they, they answer. Send it to me and then I give it to the board.
That question's a good question.
Yep, so the seat is open until May seventeen twenty twenty-two. We could push that out tomorrow, um, with, um, the deadline maybe the end of July or later, or the board will make the appointment through August seventeen forty. So that gives people a couple of weeks to submit the letters?
Mm-hmm.
You can review them, right?
Yeah.
We'll put them in the board forum as we get them. We won't, we'll put them in the board forum as we get them.
All right. All right, everyone has a list of committee descriptions. And Joanna was nice enough to amend this with how many board members and all of that on it. And then next to that, we have the committees and the people on it as we speak. So these are the people that are interested so far. All right? Okay, so...
So the X is under a name, does that mean we're on that committee or does that actually...
So the X is by the board members who submitted to me on what, what committees they want to serve on.
Right.
That's what the X means. One, we have a three, that was their third choice. Those are the people that responded and the things that they want to promote.
All right, so it looks like we're missing two people for the audit committee. Operations, missing one. Oh, I'll be on the, I'll be on the policy.
I'll stay on the policy as well.
Okay.
Um, I will stay on Hall of Fame, negotiations. Looks like people are interested in health and safety and I'm happy to step back from that one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, negotiations or not?
I'm on negotiations and, um, Hall of Fame now. And I can stick with those two.
I'm on negotiations too. All right, so you're Hall of Fame, negotiations. We need people for professional development.
I'll stay on that.
Are you? Okay.
I'll stay on committee nine as well.
All right. Great. Committee nine, you have three. Chris?
I'm on the committee nine.
Okay. I was just looking for this. So we still need two more people on the audit committee.
Some more in the Hall of Fame.
We need some more in the Hall of Fame. So some people that are interested in how the financial system works could be...
I don't know, you have a... Make sure my weekend.
Good questions. You want to, you want to jump in on that?
You have good questions.
With a meeting, it doesn't have to be in the morning, that meeting generally meets in the morning. Does that make sense? I've been here, it's not in the morning. Mornings, like, seven thirty, seven forty-five are good for you, if they're bad for you, doesn't mean it takes weeks to meet, but that is the meeting that Jen usually can't meet usually takes about an hour.
It can't, it can be faster. No, we, we haven't done it faster. Everybody has questions prepared and all that, it goes by pretty quick. You know, we had it where they're thirty minutes without a problem. But, and then we also need, uh...
Need operations.
Operations, we need one more in operations, we're dirty.
I'll switch to operations if I'm not going to do health and safety.
You're a health and safety person.
I, I know, but, but three people have expressed interest. So... My X means anything, but I can take myself off of health and safety. I kind of feel like it makes more sense for you to be on the health one. I can try the audit, it needs ten. I can try to be on it.
Okay. Cheryl, audit and health, safety.
So we have four people on committee of nine, but we only need three, so, does anyone...
They even have nine, the maximum, that means twice, so you're, that's the maximum?
Yeah, they can only have three.
Right, and there's four people signed up.
So is there somebody on the walk? You're in nine, you only have three members.
Yep.
All right. Hold on, let me see here.
We need...
Well, Chris only has one right now, and that's the committee nine, so. Doug, audit, so...
What is, for the negotiations committee, it's only meet during the final year of an existing contract?
Right.
So, hell, there's more than, well, there's a number of contracts, so...
So, yeah, so it's different, yeah.
Sometimes you meet a lot, sometimes, you know, you go a long period of time, but...
So Cheryl and Patty, there's also room in, in professional development technology as well, or Hall of Fame, or operations? I guess I want to do committee of nine.
Meet after professional development technology instead of...
Instead of committee nine?
Two, two is actually is a good number, three, five, I don't know, but we have, I don't know, two or three, that's good.
Can we go to operations real quick? Because we have only one person there, we need two. All right? Anybody else want to be in operations? All right. So, Chris, we should...
I really can stick to health and safety, committee nine, have OSHA background.
Perfect.
Some companies in, in the city now.
Well, you're on there now, so. You're on there now.
Thank you.
Yes. Hall of Fame, we need two more board members on the Hall of Fame. How many has been for that?
Well, I anticipate it's going to be, um, more frequent leading up to the event, the weekend of October first. Did I say that right date? Um, but, one, one, once a month?
You might have a couple of months after, then you start going again, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, once a month's a good number, once we get going.
Yeah.
Don't we ever get a person coming to?
That's true. Yep. Or they will get assigned.
Or, because like, we could say anything's said and they have to...
Here we have the authority on it.
So I can, whether you, I have an audit committee, I have Cheryl and Nicole.
Yes.
And you're staying on, so?
Me? Yes.
For the operations, I have Christopher, Crystal and Nicole.
Nope, not me, take Crystal off.
Just Chris, Christopher and Nicole.
Okay, so the policy, I got Doug, Cheryl, Ed and Nicole.
Take me off if I don't beat the reins.
I'll take, I'm gonna take Nicole off.
Oh, I got elected.
Health and safety, I have Patty and I have Pauline.
That's fine.
Committee of nine, I have Doug, Patty, Cheryl, Christopher.
No.
We only have three.
No, just, you have, you have Doug, Cheryl and Christopher. Oh, sorry, should. Committee of nine, it's Patty, sorry.
Doug, Patty.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Doug, Patty and, and Christopher.
Okay. On the professional development, I got Doug.
And Patty. No?
No.
Cheryl.
Doug and Cheryl, okay. Negotiations, I have Ed, Crystal, Pauline.
Correct.
Hall of Fame, I have Crystal.
So we need one more for negotiations, preferably, right? And three.
More for the hall? I mean, yes, we find whoever the new person is, but still two for the hall.
I'm gonna have to appoint somebody. Seriously.
Well, you can't, you can't be appointed to that one, because that one's gonna, um, and we need somebody that's gonna do some of the work, a lot of work.
Yeah, it's also, you know, good to have some background and, you know. It would, it would help if your, your background could help participate here, give you value.
Well, what if, um, if I do the negotiations and take, we need three for policy, but there were other interests in policy, I could, I could remove myself from policy.
We only need two for policy.
Okay.
Three.
We have three for policy.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta say, someone can't come in, you two.
Oh, all right, all right.
Okay, you need to bring me back on policy so she can do negotiations. Okay. So Nicole will do?
Policy.
Policy.
Okay.
Cheryl.
Cheryl.
Hall of Fame is the fun committee, I just want to put that one out there.
Yeah, anybody for the fun committee?
Yeah, it should be calm.
It, it helps also if you have, uh, pretty deep roots in the area and the background. That helps the Hall of Fame committee. All right, who's got what? Joanna, three. Patty has three. Cheryl has four. I have three. And I have CVS.
I should have three now.
Cheryl, Ed and Cheryl.
Do we want to say that the, do we want to put in the add that the new person would be on the Hall of Fame committee and ex other committee? Just put that in, what, for signing up for?
Yes, sounds like a plan. Cheryl, which ones are you on? You're on audit?
I'm on audit, professional development, negotiations.
But not policies?
Nope. Nicole, by on policy.
Yes, that's right. Okay. So...
Is there one other, we have one other vacancy besides the Hall of Fame? Or do the rest of the committees go on currently?
The rest are going.
Hall of Fame, there's one member. So the new member can sit, but it's still a one member.
Nicole, are you interested in chairing the audit committee?
Why not for you?
You've got some experience there. Operations and policy. Operations, policy. Who else would chair that? The last one.
I think it gets to be Chris.
That might have to get, might have to be Chris. All right.
We're gonna be all fair here, yeah. Because that one does push it up, cute. Well, Nicole already has one chair.
Doug, are you interested in chairing the policy? I'll do it if you don't want to, but if you're interested in... Or Nicole, well, Nicole's already chairing the audit.
So what are, the only one we're missing is Hall of Fame, right?
No, yeah, I'm talking about chairing the policy committee if you're, um, if you're interested in chairing that, that committee.
Oh, chairing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sure, I'll do that.
Okay. So now... Chris, guess what? You're, you're chairing the operations committee. All right. And then we need a chair for the committee of nine.
No, you have a chair.
Who is on the committee of nine?
Committee of nine right now, it's Doug, Patty and Christopher. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I, 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 good question, Dan, I didn't think we did, but...
Yeah, you don't get a chair for health and safety, PD, technology, committee nine, you don't really, you could use a chair for negotiations and you don't get a chair for Hall of Fame. Some of those are participation.
Yes. Okay, so it's, no, no chair for the committee nine, not for the health and safety. All right, so whoever comes in, we'll put them on...
Do you want us to have a chair for negotiations and that person's the one that reports back? Or do you want me to do that? I don't care.
Oh, yes.
Of, of the whole committee will report back?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, because you're, you're gonna have most of the communication with our attorney and all that, so. And then whoever comes in next. Go ahead.
Who's on the Hall of Fame?
The new person, me, Chris.
It's the fun one. What?
So there's a required three?
Well, I would like three just because of the amount of work that needs to be done.
It's a, it'll be a really large committee because there's, um, teachers, administrators, um, I'm gonna go...
It's like showing one of the first committees.
Yeah.
With four people showing the plans. To make a meeting. We're gonna reach out for more because we did, because we had, because it's not easy to put together a Hall of Fame. We'd love to have it.
And we're extended.
Not here yet, all yet.
All right, I still have CVS too. All right. So I think we, Joanna?
I'm gonna repeat them.
Go ahead.
For your appointments and the person?
Yes.
So the audit committee will be Cheryl, Ed, Nicole, with Nicole being the chair.
Correct.
The operations will be Christopher and Nicole, with Christopher being the chair. The policy will be Doug, Ed and Nicole, with Doug being the chair. The health and safety will be Patty and Pauline. Committee nine will be Doug, Patty and Christopher. Professional development technology committee will be Doug and Cheryl. Negotiations will be Cheryl, Ed, Crystal and Pauline. And the Hall of Fame will be Crystal and the new board member.
All right. Doug? Strategic plan goal.
Yeah, so we met, the strategic planning committee met with some vendors that we RFP for, and we were completely split and unexcited about the vendors. And they were, they were from California, they were from all, they were, it was a whole, it was a nationwide search. The issue of, um, that I want to bring to your attention for the strategic plan is this isn't a plan that I developed or a plan that they developed. Most strategic plans are driven by boards for community and, and, and really, um, the board is really outreach to the community to take part in the strategic, in a strategic plan. And I worry that, um, it, it, it wouldn't be a wise investment, I, I'm totally on board with the investment, but it wouldn't be a wise investment if we outweigh, say, a hundred thousand dollars for a strategic planner, which, you know, might take them a year or two to, to, um, develop this plan. develop this plan for the district if you're not all the ones leading this thing. So this was something, and I know we have new people that want a strategic plan, but it's a big, it's a big deal. And if you don't have the community input, you're, you're, um, it's just time to be good.
Yeah, well, look, participation, so, so the fact, you know, we've been doing the CVS and lots of districts, making it to around the country. And we have a pretty good institution as it is, we might get better. But it also allows us to go out and to reach out to both the staff and the community outside the institution for feedback. The anonymous improvement, uh, when you think we get all the information, you think we get, maybe we don't. Also, there may be pockets that we missed, you know, it might coordinate as well with the, I'm learning loss grants as well. I'm recording that as part of, as some capacity. But I think, Dan, a good concern is, is we have to make sure that we're best at that, we want to participate in the institution wants to participate as well.
That means like meetings, nights, you know, community groups, subcommittees, like it's, it's, well, I think everybody at policy would have said, and you had sixteen member board.
Right.
It's a lot of work, Dan.
Yeah, it has been very worky, though. There, uh, people evaluate, you have markers, you know, how well the, do teachers feel that they are appreciated? How well do you, are they doing? How well, uh, how well does the board do? How does the community think that we have, you know? I mean, you go out and you outreach to the community, ask them as well as the staff. You also put a marketing there, you know, and we, Doug has a really big concern about, um, are we reaching out to the glades or extra career example of personnel that are out, out there already that, that we're not touching it? And, uh, you know, a good, a good plan goes out and starts marketing to somebody, hey, look, we're, we're interested in really increasing, improving our, our focus and, uh, you know, this, this market, we're capable of it, where we wanna go. But then it's right, it has to be something that will give you time to, if that just does, it's people on the outside as well.
I'm just out of curiosity, Mr. Nick, do you think there was less applicants because of the COVID pandemic? Like, because we did the, the leads from the vendors?
No, I think our applicants were, were good. I mean, they were the, that's some of the best names in the business. We didn't necessarily have anybody that, I mean, another thing too is you gotta kinda, gotta, sorry, you have to kind of get excited about the person you're gonna work with. And you were there, and it wasn't, like, there wasn't, nobody knocked our socks off. But then you also have to be excited about doing it, like, oh, and, and I think, everything Ed said is spot on, spot on. I think that a lot of times people do strategic plans because they've been dormant or stagnant, and people get excited because they finally get to be heard and you get to change things and get them forward. What I worry about is the fatigue we have with, obviously, we're always asking everybody to do that progressive thing that we always talk about here. And I really, like, if it's, oh, here's another, there's another thing they're doing, like, you know, I don't know, I don't know that they, that people outside of this room are gonna jump onto that if we're, well, right now, we're having a hard time finding coaches. People are talking about, I don't know if I wanna coach because I wanna make the grant money, like, there, you know, there's only so many things people can do.
This has been, this has been tough year for staff, everyone all the way around, I know that. Maybe, maybe we wanna consider not such a big endeavor, because the practice that we look at, purging stuff, really elaborate. Should we consider, um, something, a proportion of it or survey like? I mean, there's, there's, you know what you don't know, right? So unless you go out and just ask the questions and do the surveys, which you staff, maybe, maybe we do something and we revisit the objective and do something that is not as time exhaustive to people who are already used to something. Do something like that.
Or do we pause it or?
No.
And redo the work, but, you know, redo it at the end of the summer school year and let people transition back into the COVID pandemic, but still do the, the full work.
Sure, sure. Any thoughts around that?
The idea of pausing it is wise, because I don't think we're gonna have to give up the summer nights to come in.
No.
And move this thing forward. And then you have to start a school year in maybe October or maybe after the holiday season. And who knows, you know, who knows, maybe people will be reinvigorated or maybe we'll, we'll, and we can look at other ideas that Ed said too. Maybe there's a, 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 a unique abbreviated way to, to achieve some of the goals of a strategic plan.
Maybe we just start small, start just taking some sort of outside organizations and do some surveys and questions that we're interested in at a very, very top level. And that way, we also, we can also get information on what the staff wants to look at, right?
Well, that's it, that's, let's make sure that we, we know, when we talk about that, it's, it's the community, it's the whole, it's the staff, it's the parents, it's the whole school community.
That's true. All right, so let's, let's move forward, like, put the bombs on it, based on our recommendation, and we start looking at a pared down version. And we can just bridge from the side.
Okay.
The focus on doing that for maybe starting the P E next year or something.
Okay, I'll, I'll, in some of the, um, conferences I go to, I'll try to pick some brains and see what's out there.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, the negotiations on here, I didn't know if anybody wanted to give a brief update, certainly very, you guys be very careful for this negotiations, but um, maybe just the fact that we have met, we have two more dates set, I thought, the meeting, uh, we had a sense of hope. Um, maybe at the end of the meeting, was, was it, would you say that, Crystal?
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't know, was it just me?
No.
Oh, you were, sorry.
Yeah, I think your, was, the conversation was a big thing all the way around. It's good.
And then the board meeting is now on the seventh, tenth. So unless it, unless somebody, unless the majority wanna move it to the tenth, we'll go to the seventeenth, cause that's already been passed. Good.
Uh, can I just have one more thing? Um, we, as a board, want to sort of say thank you to the school community. So we have drafted a letter, I'll read it out, but we'd like to also, we'll push it out to the community. So, we can have this role, this for school board, which is to extend our deepest gratitude to all faculty and staff for your outstanding effort in permitting during the COVID pandemic school year of 2020, 2021. We recognize working in this school can be a tough job during a difficult year. We also appreciate you as one of the most important roles in American society. The COVID pandemic has highlighted that in unprecedented ways. The Board of Education is appreciative of your efforts and the delivery of quality and innovative education students receive. We hope you feel pride in your efforts as well. This letter of thanks speaks to recognize all the teachers, aides, psychologists, counselors, librarians, administrators, physical therapists, occupational therapists, nurses, bus driver's mates, building and grounds employees, custodians, cafeteria workers, secretaries, coaches, business office employees, teaching assistants, automotive mechanics, Coda, technology department employees, supervisors and school safety officers. Each and every one of you deserve recognition for the time, dedication, caring and expertise you have contributed to students' lives and by extension, our community at large. Your efforts matter and will lead life-affirming life essays in the wise you touch. Congrats to us, we can count on you for this, for you. Thank you very much.
I'll hear you.
Okay, I don't want to miss anybody, I apologize, I think we did a few minds.
I'll just figure this out. We were here for public comment. Um, do we need to go into the executive session?
Yes.
So. Third pro temp. So to, to the board of the kitchen points, who would put the third one?
Ed, Mary.
Okay. Go into executive session, are there any decisions to come out in executive session, right?
Sorry, to go in, so Crystal's gonna make the point that that you'll be third pro temp in a second.
Yes.
Me a second.
Oh, second.
Sure.
Yep.
And, uh, will, will we just move into executive session?
Discuss proposed pending or current litigation.
And we can, uh, expand that collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen, so the service law can launch it.
All right, and, uh, and no, no decision back to executive session?
Correct. Do we wanna, we got first and second, I don't have a discussion right now.
All right, no other questions about the assembly on paper? All right, we are going to the second.
Excuse me, Ed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is Crystal and Cheryl approving you to become the third pro temp?
Yes, I was, I was.
So now who's motioning and seconding to go into, into, um, executive session?
Yeah, you're right.
A motion.
Nicole motion, second. I'll second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
I also wanted to, um, give the board notice that Missy Parkin is here, she's our next E E S principal. Missy, and Joseph Prichet is our associate principal at the high school, helping out, more than helping out with athletics and extracurriculars. Welcome, guys.